Never show the palm. Hello?
Yeah, we are.
Alrighty then. Welcome everyone to the January 16th, 2019 Nishova Regional School Committee Regular Meeting. Calling the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Thank you, Alina. We are going to enter into executive session. This should be a real quick one to approve some meeting minutes, so if someone would please make a motion. Kathy?
Okay, I move that we...do we have to return this meeting and then move into the back?
You're gonna...no, you're just gonna say at the end of it.
To go ahead, okay, to return, yeah. I move we enter into executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A7 to comply with or act under the authority of any general or specific law of federal grant and aid requirements. Review of executive session minutes of December 19, 2018 in accordance with open meeting law, MGL Chapter 30A.
To return?
To return to open session at the conclusion of executive session.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, Susan. And Lorraine, yes. Steve, yes. Lorraine, yes. And Kathy?
Yes.
Yes. Alright, folks, we'll be back.
Alright.
Teachers from all around the world read the book Refugee to their students. Using technology, the reading experience was shared with one in four hundred thousand participants, including the students from LBMS. Refugee features three different perspectives that highlight the struggles and reality of being a refugee. In our notebooks, we wrote down important information and facts as we read. The Global Readaloud was a fun and knowledgeable experience. Here's a portion of Hunsie's flipgrid to share her thinking.
One of the novel, I found Matthew's story to be the most interesting. His story is set in the present. Matthew faced these obstacles in 2015. This intrigued me because I've never fully thought about the conflicts that people my own age could face in different places of the world.
Another event in which we participated in as a reading community is the Great LBMS Read. This is Brennan, who works in the Media Center, organized a fun experience inspired by the PPS, The Great American Read, which was launched to discover America's most-loved novel. Out of the one hundred finalists, does anyone know what book was America's favorite?
Is it To Kill a Mockingbird?
Yep.
She's a former teacher, that's me, fair enough.
She just knows stuff.
Oh, okay.
We tried to create the same experience at the library, wondering what our number-one book would be. For The Great LBMS Read, the LBMS students voted for their favorite fictional book. A list of twenty-five books was then established based on the students' votes. LBMS's most-loved book is then chosen after voting from the list of twenty-five. Here are the results, with holes taking the number-one spot. What's cool about workshop is we not only get to read independently, it also allows us to connect with others and think beyond ourselves, which is really important for a middle-schooler to learn how to do.
I completely agree, Gina. All in all, being a part of Reader's Workshop has allowed students like us to grow in all literary aspects. Through personal notebooks, a routine designed to enrich our minds, the benefits of choice, and a caring community of readers, we are being given the tools we need to build and empower ourselves, every day. Together, we will change the world, one word at a time. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
So, I have a comment. I just want to commend you on your presentation and your presentation skills. You did a great job. You were concise. You had all the main points, and certainly held my interest. And I'm very impressed with how you relate to reading and this whole process. So, congratulations. The other question I have is, is this part of the seventh-grade curriculum? Are there other grades at the middle schools doing this? Is it a district-wide thing? Is it specific to Luther Burbank?
So, all three grades at Luther Burbank, follow the workshop model, to vertically align with MRE. I know that Hale and Sawyer are also in the development process, too, to fully align K-12, well, K-9, as the students enter into the high school. So, we are in implementation, and Hale and Sawyer are in the process.
Oh, that's wonderful, sharing. Wow, what a great idea. Mike?
This isn't directed to anyone specifically, but do you feel like the workshop has made you more passionate readers or more passionate writers?
I think it's done both, because we're allowed to read books that we want to. So, reading is more interesting, because we can choose topics that we are interested in. And from that reading, we can get inspired to write better and write things that we actually love.
And it's based off of all the prompts that we learned. So, since we love the books we're reading so much, we want to write about them, but you don't feel like you have to. It's like, it helps you along your reading. The writing is linked, so it helps in both ways.
Any other questions from our school committee members?
I just want to make a quick comment, too, and actually, I felt the same thing as Maggie Goodyan did, too. Your level of professionalism tonight was just extraordinary. It really was. Your enunciation, your tone, hitting the salient points. Overall, I would have given you an A+ tonight. I think you just did great. So, thank you so much for coming tonight. We really, really appreciate it. Thank you to our teachers and our administrators for making this kind of thing happen. Parents, thank you, Dean, for bringing the students. It's just such a treat for us, when they come. So, thank you very, very much.
I'm just wondering, so it sounds like this is something that's going through the whole district. So, how did this come about? Was this initiated by something that Laura had done in her district, and it just caught on? Or is this some recommendation?
Or is it because they're educated?
Well, and I get that. We weren't exposed to stuff like this before, so is this...
Well, we have a number of things happening within the district, district-wide, right now. And don't forget, the literacy program that we've started, that we're in, I think, year four now of that. And so, this is kind of a nice segue to go right into this. And, you know, part of our goal, of course, is to try to make sure that we have equity amongst our three communities, so everybody's on the same page, learning the same kinds of things in the same kind of way. It doesn't have to be identical, but that there's a similar approach, and that's really where we're aiming. And this is just a fabulous way, means to use. And I know you were really excited about it. I know that you've done a lot of work on it, and your staff's done an incredible amount of work to get this. I mean, this is amazing. Thank you so much.
Really authentic.
Yeah, very authentic. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you all so much for coming. So, you can go home if you want. Take us home. Unfortunately, that's not...
Papers and covers.
Yep. All right. I only have one update, well, two, just to remind everybody to make sure that their subcommittee mini-minute, subcommittee mini-minutes are up-to-date, approved, so they can be posted. Does anybody behind the ball on that?
Look, everybody's up-to-date.
Awesome. Thank you.
It's awesome.
And it is awesome. Go us! And then, our budget meeting is on the 26th. And again, I keep forgetting, is it starting at eight?
Yes, I believe that that's what time we've...
Well, breakfast at eight.
Breakfast at eight, and I think we're starting at 8:50 or something like that. Yeah, it'll be right here.
Yeah, and the public is obviously welcome to observe. We won't be holding citizens' comments that night, because it's a workshop. That morning. That morning. It's eight o'clock in the morning, and it's going to be a long morning. But it's actually quite informative, and I don't want to go on too much, but I do want to share with people what they can expect if they watch it or they attend it. Superintendent Clancy brings up each of the individuals that's responsible for major areas in the district to talk about how things are going, what they need, and that formulates the basis of budget discussions and discussions about what we're going to be able to fund, what we're not going to be able to fund, and where we're going to go. Okay, moving on. Student representative report, Mr. De Laal.
Hello. So, starting off with sports. To get the unfortunate news out of the way, Neshoba's hockey team, boys' hockey team, unfortunately, lost their big rivalry game against Hudson High School eight to zero last week. They will aim to redeem themselves tonight in their game against Lunenburg. Both the boys' and girls' basketball teams defeated Lemonster High School last week. The boys scoring fifty-three to Lemonsters thirty-seven, and the girls scoring forty-six to Lemonsters thirty-six. Both basketball teams also beat Fitchburg yesterday. The boys won by as close three points, whereas the girls pulled ahead by twenty-five points. The girls' field hockey coach, Mrs. Mariani, was named Central Mass Division One Coach of the Year at Sunday's Field Hockey Banquet. Neshoba's Natalie Brown was named an All-Star, a Best of Sixty Player, as well as the D1 Player of the Year, and several other players on the team were named All-Stars and Best of Sixty. The boys' indoor track team lost their meet on January ninth, but the girls were able to secure a win over Groton Dunstable, and both girls' and boys' swim teams won against Bromfield last week. So, for art and music, the Central District Band and Choir members have rehearsals tonight, as well as Friday, in preparation for the concert coming up on the nineteenth at Mechanics Hall. Auditions for the MMEA All-State Music Groups will be held at Shrewsbury High School on January twenty-sixth. Hale Middle School will be hosting their winter concert next Wednesday, January twenty-third, and the snow date will be the twenty-fourth. For events, the midterms for the high school students will be held all of next week, with late starts every day except Monday, which is a day off for Martin Luther King Junior Day. Neshoba Deca's trip to the district competition was very successful last week. There will be one hundred nineteen students going to the state competition in Boston.
That's amazing, honestly. That's just amazing.
It's, I believe, fifteen higher than last year. So, each year, they grow the number. But they will be competing in Boston in hopes of making it to the next round, which is a competition in Orlando, Florida. And the Neshoba's Interact Club will be making eye-care packages that will be donated to the St. Francis House. And Florence Sawyer has their student council dance next January, uh, next week, January twenty-fifth, sorry.
No worries.
That's what I have.
Thank you. Anything else you want to add? Want to say a good round of applause?
I have a, I'm actually in rehearsal right now.
Okay, why don't you work? We'll let you go. Thank you for being here, Colin. Take it easy. That was very, very well done, Colin. He does a great job. Yep, he just really did. And I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent for her report.
Sure, thank you. So, Assistant Superintendent McGuire and I will kind of both work through the four items that are on there tonight. The first is the professional development activities, and I think he's just going to provide a quick update, and we had Friday as lots of professional development activities on Friday. Friday was a really good day for the district. So, if you can speak to the professional development activities?
Sure. Friday, January eleventh, was a very busy day in the district from the lens of professional development activities, in preparation for a visit on March eighth from George Curros, who wrote the Innovator's Mindset around the theme of empowering students. That is our theme for the year. The entire district on Friday participated in varied and differentiated PD work at various schools. Our six-through-twelve ELA teachers engaged in Part Two of Kate Roberts', A Novel Approach, which has been widely attended. We also have some participation from Grafton and Hudson Schools, who were really eager to get in there with us. So, we were over at the police station all day long, working with her. She's a very energetic, rigorous presenter, and she offers a variety of creative ways to really get into a novel and teach literature. Our early literacy programming was busy working with the Writers Workshop Model, which you just saw our presentation of, from our LBMS students. That workshop model comes out of Columbia University's Teacher College, and that is a very popular, widely-used model that we are now, obviously, implementing in the district and starting at some of our other schools. That was a day-long session on effective strategies for teaching, reading, and writing. And then, in the afternoon, the rest of our faculties and staff continued working on the year's theme of empowering students in preparation for George Curros's visit in March. From new strategies in digital learning to book groups focused on innovation and growth mindset, it was a very productive day of professional learning in the Neshoba community.
You know, I noticed tonight, too, if you noticed on the first slide that the students had up tonight, it was empowering students, you know? So, as you move through our school community right now, you see a lot of work with that theme in mind. I think that's been very successful from my lens this year. I had somebody say to me the other day, "I know what book and author should come next year." So, I think it's really catching on, and I think folks are doing just a great job with it.
Can I ask you a quick question? You mentioned that you had teachers come to what we hosted from other districts. Was that something that you invited, or did they hear about it, or...
Uh, both.
Both. Oh, wow.
Definitely both.
That's great.
So, and that idea of really trying to collaborate with other districts, because we go to a lot of PDs sometimes with other districts, so we have some relationships with area schools, and she's that widely-known and appreciated that they joined in.
We're having, we're experiencing the same thing with the George Curros on March eighth right now. In fact, we're saying, "Okay, how many can we handle?"
Right.
And that's, you know, on parking for us right now at the high school, because a lot of, we've got, had a lot of outreach from other school districts that want to come to the George Curros function. Just a quick touch on that.
Except the cost?
Yes, actually, yes.
Thank you.
So, the other thing to know about March eighth, as well, of course, is that our Commissioner of Education will be joining us that morning as well. So, we'll be starting early. We'll take a quick break, and then we'll be coming back and reconvening so that we can meet with our Commissioner. So, we're looking forward to that. It'll be a really good day, I think.
Thank you.
The section item here is with regards to the website. Now, you remember that the website has been something that we've been working towards, and when Todd came in, I said, "You know, this has been a goal, and can this be one of the projects you take on?" And he's just done an amazing job. He's worked very closely with Cindy Larson, who, as you know Cindy Larson well, from coming into our meetings. And I think collectively, between the two of you and our staff, that also, like, I mean, it was really a large collective effort. So, we're ready to go live. In fact, did earlier.
It did.
Did go live this morning. This morning. I see you've got it up there. So, Todd, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. And I'm going to, we're going to talk about it a little bit more later, Cindy and I. We've got just more of a formal presentation around the website reveal, but, you know, this was really after months of planning and meeting and design and feedback from multiple constituencies within the district, parents, surveys to teachers, working with the staff and the principals at every single school. The website did go live today. Our teams in teaching and learning and technology and at each of our schools really have put in, you know, a tremendous amount of time. I know a lot, all through the fall, I've been giving you updates in the amount of cleanup, et cetera, that have gone into that, and really with the lead from Cindy Larson, our Coordinator of Digital Learning. We're excited to share that with you folks a little bit later on in the meeting, but it really has been a collaborative community effort, and we're really excited about the website and, you know, in conjunction with the district communication plan and the goals associated with that. We'll talk more about it later, but that did go live this morning.
I was in a, I work in a financial services marketing function, and I was in a digital meeting. So, we're building out a new digital structure, and I thought, "Oh, I don't want anybody to see me in the meeting. We all have our laptops. Let me pull up the agenda to make sure I can print it before I came." And I was like, "Oh, wow!" And they're like, "What are you looking at? What are you looking at?" I'm like, "Nothing, nothing!" It looked great. So, just the homepage itself and everything underneath it makes it so much easier to find what you're looking for. So, it's really, really...
We're thrilled.
Contemporary, nice job.
We'll talk more later, but there's some other, yeah.
Okay.
The third item is Children's Friend Presentation, and I think, Todd, you can start on that, and then I'll just kind of finish it up.
Absolutely. The Children's Friend Presentation was actually took place this morning with our district administrators. They are a group located in Worcester that is focused on diverse groups of peoples in our state and all over the country. This morning, we were really focused on their work with the LGBT community and particularly associated with gender identity, and really how to really grasp that and work with our community and work with our schools around those issues. Parker Terrell, who's one of the directors of the organization, presented a foundational workshop this morning, really just laying some foundation on current terms, current law, current practices and tips, and really in terms of promoting that level of tolerance around gender identity in that community within our schools. The presentation was really thoughtful. It was informative, and it offered yet another perspective really into our work moving forward with social-emotional learning in the district, which certainly is one of our major goals and part of our day.
So, just to kind of spring from that, so the first time I had seen them was at the Worcester County Superintendent's Roundtable, and they did a mini-presentation, and I was just so impressed, and I thought, "I like the approach that they took." It was really, there was really not a lot of emotion. It's just, "Here are the facts, and you need to know the following." And this morning, we did it with, we chose to just do it with our principal group and a couple of others, like Diana Durf, for example, from the high school, came in, and we had somebody else come from Luther Burbank, and we just thought, we just kind of piloted and see how we felt about it. When Parker was done, I think he just did such a great job. He was able to insert small anecdotes, as well as the information, and it just really brought it to life. It wasn't one of those presentations where you left and you said, "Wow, that was amazing," but it was one of those that you said, "Hmm, I need to go back and do some thinking." Like, it was really, I found it very thought-provoking. So, some of the administrators had said after, because we were just kind of dipping our toe in the water to say, "Is this a group that we would like to bring forward now on a broader scale to some of our staff, particularly our counselors?" And I think, all right around the table, we said, "Yes, this is a group that we'd like to bring back." He just came alone this morning, but there's a group, it's all funded right now by grant money, so it's all free for us to take advantage of. So, I was really, really impressed. They are working in a number of other school districts, so they just did a really good job this morning, so. The last thing I'm just going to bring up, if you were to look at my schedule right now, I have all the Neshoba Regional High School kind of blocked all over. I've been meeting, I've done this before, and I'm doing this, again, this is probably the fourth time I've done it, a meeting with the key leadership folks at Neshoba Regional High School. This time, when I sent out my memo, it was whatever topic you want to talk about. Normally, I go with them and say, "I'm looking to talk about, you know, for example, transitioning the new principal, or budget, or whatever we're talking about." This time, I left it wide open and said, "Whatever you want to talk about will be the topic." I said, "I only need fifteen minutes or twenty minutes of your time." Well, Alita blocked an hour, and it's run an hour or an hour and a half for every single one of these. So, it's been really, really rich. I have loved the discussion. So far, I've met with probably ninety percent of the leadership over there in terms of our department chairs and such. I have a few more before the end of the week, and then I'll finish up with the key administrators, and then we'll sit down and discuss the findings. It has been so, so enriching. It's been fabulous. So, special thanks to everybody who's taken an hour and a half out of their time to meet with me at the high school. It's been great, so thank you. That's it.
Thanks for doing that. All right, moving into new business, we have a facilities update with building rentals' rate review. So, coming to the table is...
Rob Fries will be coming up, and I think Pat Maroni, you might as well come up as well.
And Pat's not getting out of it.
Well, she, she's really, when you take a look at the two, I mean, she helps to support Rob. Rob really runs his own unit.
My problems.
Yeah, so, of course, Pat is the one that generally has to find the funds or some way of funding whatever our issues are, so they are dynamic duo over there. So, Rob, we're really excited to see what you bring tonight. Thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate it.
Thanks for having me. Good evening. Did you want to get into the rates?
No.
Okay. So, facilities update. The hydrogeological evaluation for the leach field has come back, and it has been approved by DEP.
We're thrilled with that.
For the future application of the groundwater discharge permit. On-site engineering will be starting the designing, sizing of the force-made pump system, the field pumps, and the lay of a leach field. On-site, we'll be working with Tennessee Gas for the main line, the gas line that runs through the property that the force-made is going to have to cross to get out to the new leach field area. They'll be putting the permitting together and the bid specs for preparation to go out to bid in the springtime, and also applying for the groundwater discharge permit with MS DEP.
And that's at the high school?
That is at the high school.
Right. That's a leach field issue that we've ongoing, remember, just to back up, we had set fifty thousand aside this year for the engineering. That's been basically relatively completed now, and when we got the letter from the DEP the other day, it was like a small happy dance in our offices, because it's passed now, so now we can take that next step to go forth and say, "Okay, so now, how much is this? What does the design look like?" So, that's our next phase.
As some, I'm sure all of you are aware of, the oil tank at the high school, it sits within a concrete vault, and the concrete vault has taken on surface water back in mid-November, and it was about fifty-three inches of water with inside that concrete vault. There was approximately twenty-five-hundred gallons of oil in the tank, so the hydrostatic pressure basically floated, or the tanks broke away from the hold-down straps that were inside that vault, which cut off oil supply into the high school, and it was on a Friday afternoon.
Right before Thanksgiving.
Right before Thanksgiving, going into the coldest week of the year. So, we had a temporary tank put in place, a couple of different temporary tanks in place. Right now, we have a five-thousand-gallon temporary tank in place to get through the way dirt, to figure out what the best solution would be to repair or replace the tank. All the water has been removed from the vault, and we're working with a couple of different vendors to see what the best scenario, whether we stick with oil or we convert to propane or liquid natural gas.
Just to give a bit of a, so that no one is surprised by this, this has got a big price tag attached to it, and so I just want to put that out there right now. I mean, we got a figure, we've had a figure in the last couple of days, or maybe the last day or so, but we really don't know where we're going to end up going with this right now, so that figure could change, so we're kind of hesitant to put it out there, but it's not a twenty or thirty thousand dollar figure. It's a big figure. I also have a call-in to MSBA, just to mention to them that here we are again with a really big item. I don't think that there's anything that they can do right now. I think we're going to have to wait this out for, once we resubmit that SOI, but this is something that's going to have to happen, and it's going to have to be done, taken care of.
So, one of the things that might be helpful for people to understand is that when something happens at the high school and it has to be replaced, the district bears the cost of that. If something were to happen in one of the elementary or middle schools in the towns, the towns own those buildings, and the town would have to pay for that. So, this, whatever the cost of this is, will be borne out of the district budget and is unplanned. So, people just need to keep that in the back of their minds.
Yeah. Lynn?
Is that like an example of the E&amp;D thing, or...
Well, I don't know where you're going to find, yeah, depends on how much it is, too, right?
Yeah.
And are you submitting the SOI this year?
We'll resubmit this year. You've already taken a vote to have me re-craft it, yeah.
So, it's going in?
Yeah, it'll go back in.
Steve?
Yeah, you mentioned propane or LNG as an alternative. Where would we get the LNG from?
I was unaware of this until talking to a vendor, but they, it gets delivered like propane does, in trucks. So, just another option to see what...
I was just thinking, maybe we could just tap off the Tennessee...
The Tennessee line.
That would be a best solution. Unfortunately, Tennessee Gas won't allow us to do that, but yeah, so that would be the best solution.
That would make the most amount of sense, wouldn't it? I mean, because it's going right through the field anyway, yeah. And Lynn, you had a quick one?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, because this is so expensive, is there any way to put a fix in that would be incorporated into whatever we're going to be doing?
Oh, we don't know.
Yeah, that's, in fact, that's the kind of discussion we're having. That's why, he's just telling you tonight, kind of giving you a flavor, this kind of discussion is ongoing right now, because, of course, that's exactly what we want, right, is to try to figure something like that, or can we continue, which I know the answer's already no. But, I mean, the first thing I asked was, can we continue the same method we're doing right now? But then, what happens if that takes, like, if we could, and I know we can't, but if we could do it for a year and we get turned down again, then what? You know, and then you're back saying, "Okay, what are we going to do?" And if, I don't know how you feel, but I know it's, just as a super, it's a lot of stress, making sure that that building is heated every day, you know, because you're kind, you know, so I really think we need to find a solution in some form or another.
And so, there's no small MSBA, little shootout, hard things?
Well, so, that's a great point. You know, the, we looked into this for the leach field last year. That's a great line of thinking, because the MSBAs kind of got those two tiers, right? But if you get approved for the funding of the smaller project...
You look at the larger?
You're not viewed quite as favorably. I'm not seeing it properly articulated as well, but you're not, because what they're saying is, "Hey, your building is good enough that we just put another, I don't know, pick a number, two, three, four hundred thousand, whatever, any number, whatever it is." whatever it is, like I'm thinking the Leach Field, we went to them and said, "Look, we've got this $300,000 project." And it was like, "Well, if we give you that, then that means that the building is good to go for another 10, 20, 30 years." So I think at the end of this, we will have to deal with this particular cost.
So, just out of curiosity, the fact that we don't have, like you just looked along, is this a situation where the building is, what is the one with the services, the city? We couldn't have you. So would you have an obsolete system at that point?
We have a temporary tank, is what we have, a smaller oil tank right now. I'm not sure that that's her question, though. I think a...
Would it fall into one of the categories?
No, I don't, one of the categories...
Of the MSBA? Well, we don't know. I mean, she, I think what she's saying is, you've looked into it, you've talked to them, you probably haven't heard back from them.
Yeah, well, we did though with the Leach Field, when I took the Leach Field, and what I'm saying is, I'm sure that when I do connect, I'm gonna get the exact same answer. So I'm...
So you're gonna come back and let us know.
Yeah, but I'm, I'll be very surprised if we're able to tap into that. And/or we tap into it and we, you know, forego the other situation.
All right, you wanna roll into the center school issue?
Yes.
Sorry, just a quick question on the oil tank. Is DEP involved or any other agency? Because it sounds like it was an oil spill.
Well, the only oil that, there was a skim of oil on the top of the, on the surface of the water, and that was just from when the line broke, that connection, wherever, whatever oil was at that connection. So that was all sucked out and disposed of properly. But there was no, there's no contamination to any soil that we know of right now, because it was just a skim of water on the surface.
So we don't need like approvals or...
No, when we go to put a new tank in and stuff like that, that's when DEP will, they'll come into play.
Okay.
The company, the company that we're dealing with, NRC, they're dealing with all of the permitting and disposal and all that stuff. Over at the center school, there was an automatic float valve for the fire suppression system. There's a main tank that, main holding tank that supplies water to a vault area that has a pump, suction pump, a suction in it that goes through the pump. And the mechanical float valve was below the water, basically like some pump you would have in your house, that failed due to, just over time, being sitting in the water. So Johnson Controls, who we deal with for us, a fire suppression system, they suggested that we move that above grade, which is a normal float valve that goes down into the water to take all those mechanicals out. But one challenge with the project is, there's a 12-inch main feed that comes off of that main tank and there's no gate valve on it, so we had to hire a scuba diver to go down in said vault, plug off the 12-inch line coming in, in order to stop the water, to pump the vault out, to get in there and make the repair, then fill it back up. So all right, that took about a day, so we're back in, you know, back in service with that. And they did an NFPA 25 inspection and cleaning while all that work was being done, so we're in compliance.
I just want to mention too, I want to give a special thanks out to our friends in Stowe, because they worked with us through this project and we're well communicated with, so just so that you know, like Bill Rickley, we had regular communication with him and Craig is a part...
Fine apartment, town building official, Craig Martin.
Yeah, so hats off to them too, for working with all of us.
Number one over at the center school, we've had an increased number of service calls for the boiler plan. Right now we're working with the manufacturer for solutions and also warranty issues, if that's at all possible. The boilers are going into flame failure basically, where they're running and then it just shuts off. There's two condensing and two non-condensing boilers. On one of the non-condensing boilers, we found that the main gas valve is bad. We just found that out on Tuesday, not Monday, sorry. The parts have been ordered for that, so we're hoping that that'll be repaired by the end of the week. To get to these units to repair, you know, in a situation like that, you have to basically tear the whole boiler down to the ground.
How old is the school?
Seven years old, I believe, seven years.
No, it's, is it 11?
Let me see, Christopher's...
Because it didn't, wasn't it just last year that we just, that we... I think it's 11 years.
11 years?
No, it's last...
I think it was started 11 years ago.
Well, the reason I say that is because at the 10-year mark, we disbanded the group and that was in my time. Like I sat at that meeting.
That was 10 years.
But that went with me when they broke ground, but not when it was open.
No, I totally agree. I think that that's exactly what it was, yeah.
So if any of you see...
Yeah.
So the manufacturer of these boilers is Riverside Hydrionics. They were sold off to PVI and I don't know how shortly after, but these units, these two units were discontinued. So trying to find, we've been on the phone with the rep company, with PVI themselves, the burner tech has been there, on the phone with the engineers, trying to go through any sort of issues that they would know. It's been, it's been very troublesome to try to work through this on the phone with them. We're also trying to get the rep out, the PVI rep out from New Hampshire to come and actually physically take a look and see if they see something that's not quite right that, you know, we might have a solution for. But like I said, that one boiler, we should be back up and running by the end of the week.
You've been busy, huh?
Just a little bit.
Yeah.
There's things interesting.
So PVI is now the manufacturer?
They own Riverside Hydrionics. So there was, Riverside Hydrionics was taken over by PVI.
All right. Any questions? Any additional questions? Thank you, that was a great update. Not great news, but great update. Thanks for being on it.
I feel like I look like a loud every time I do this.
Not yet, not yet. We didn't hear the number, so not yet, but thank you. We're gonna move into the building safety update. I'm not sure who's gonna ask me.
Yeah, they're gonna stay right here.
Oh, well, hello.
Welcome. Rental fees, that was part of the...
Oh, yeah, what about the rental fees? I'm sorry, thanks a lot.
Oh, the rental fees, we are not requesting any increase in the rates for this year. Last year, when we went through the rate increase, we, we looked at it, you know, as something that could sustain over a couple of years, so that every year we weren't going up.
But we're reevaluating every year?
Yes, we are reevaluating every year.
Okay. So the rental fees are covering the people that have to stay and the life and everything? Some good insurance and stuff?
Very good.
Okay. Want to stop us just a minute?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to do your building safety update.
Okay, so we hired a company called Omnium Protection Group and they did a security assess, a school security assessment, which is complete. And in their...
Of which school, I'm sorry?
Of all schools.
We did the entire district. This is part of last year's project leading into this.
So basically what they did was they went to each location and they evaluated the outside of the buildings, the inside of the building, the outside of the building, they looked at lighting, landscaping and visibility, the general buildings and grounds, signage, doors and windows, and their ability to stop intruders, walkways, roof access and traffic and parking lot safety. And the inside, they looked at the lighting, the lobby entrances, restrooms, classrooms, cafeterias and hallways and custodian mechanical rooms, you know, to see if they were safe. We also have camera recommendations from them for every school and recommendations for security alarms.
Are you gonna be including those recommendations in the budget discussions?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll hold you onto that. So for facilities, without getting into the specifics, we have plans for changes for security in and around the entrances, cameras and building access. And many of them are built into this year's budget. So, and one of the big items too, that you will see coming through on the capital request that we have to the member towns, is we have, it's reflective of upgrading some of those security, the basics of the security of the cameras, so that we have better visibility across the whole district. And this will also enhance communication between schools and law enforcement, obviously, which is important. And I just want to also make mention two of the ongoing training for staff and students with our emergency response task force. I know that we've had an update from Lisa Gilricki and I believe that she will probably come forward and have another one in the future, but that does continue and she's right on track as far as getting everybody trained that needs to be trained.
That's great. This has been a long project, too.
Yes.
Yes.
And we started this one, what, two, three years ago?
Three years ago.
Three years ago. So great timing for that. So I'm looking forward to hearing about when we get into the discussions on the budget. Because we always say, number one rule, right, is safety.
Safety.
So, thank you, really appreciate it. Any questions before I let you go? I'm sorry, folks, nothing? Okay, moving on. Thank you both. And now we have the new website reveal that everybody could go look at themselves.
You can. Cindy's gonna join me.
Hi Cindy, welcome.
Hello. How are you?
How are you?
Good.
So I'm gonna, I'll start and then I'm gonna hand it over to Cindy for a bit. So what we wanted to do is just kinda give a brief presentation prior to just looking at the website or kind of revealing the website for you, that's tied to the rationale for the website, the process that we've gone through, and then where we see ourselves kinda moving forward. Similarly in line with the communication plan and the digital literacy plan, those same themes about what are we currently doing, how do we see that kinda moving forward? So we really want, the rationale for this is really to support the district's efforts to strengthen communication with the community as outlined in the district communication plan. So if you go back to the district communication plan, the new website and the new webpages associated with each of the schools are tied to that communication plan. And in every group that we spoke with in terms of feedback, the idea around communication and those themes of consistency and predictability, you know, across all webpages and across all of our schools, was a common theme that we found. We want to provide community members with information that is current, that is easily accessed. As I mentioned throughout the fall, the number of pages of material and information just that we cleaned up or took away from the website was vast. We want to increase accessibility for all of our communities. We want to address the needs of a multi-language community. You will see that there's translation assistance now located on all of our pages, as well as the ability to translate into different languages, but you can now tap into assistance, assistance that might be needed for translation services. Again, the idea of promoting consistency across all school webpages, you will see that the setup for each of the webpages for each school and the district site is the same. Things are in the same place. And really this idea of cleaning up, organizing and really streamlining the essential information, and this is really where Cindy has taken the lead on, she's been instrumental really in just pulling everybody together from all of our schools. Days long of cleanup activity with administrative assistants and with principals, her conversations, really at all hours of the day with School Messenger, our design team. Last night, she was telling me to take deep breaths because we were facing a deadline. So Cindy really has taken and spearheaded the process. You know, I came in on July 1st and I think it was July 1st that you and I sat down and said, "We're gonna do this." It's a huge undertaking. So Cindy's gonna talk more about the process that she's gone through, we've gone through, and then kinda moving forward, and then we'll talk about the website.
So as Todd said, we started by just going through lots of surveys that had been done, which was very timely. We met with all stakeholders personally and listened to their feedback and that really helped us carve out objectives that led to us moving forward towards consistency and clarity and accessibility for all end users. What that meant was, as Todd said, a lot of cleanup sessions with people and just getting rid of dead links and there were misspellings and there were broken links and it was just hours and hours and hours and probably days and weeks of editing. And then we would review more, it's just there was a lot of pages of useless information. So then we worked with a website designer who is School President, School Messenger President, and worked on, now that we've cleaned it up, because I thought it was important to clean up everything before we moved to the new templates, and we went through a couple of different revision cycles with them. Moving forward, we're carving out new editing protocols. It's really important that we have all our protocols point to current and essential information, consistency across the district, and we continue to collect feedback from all of our end users. And that means some professional development that's never really taken place before around editing, because you have so many editors in different buildings, that we need how to simply edit, but also how to make sure that it's accessible, accessible to all of our users. And then also moving forward, we want to look at trends in social media, so we can at least keep it, you know, really up to date.
Cindy, can I just say something before you go?
We've got the drumroll going, that's too cute.
That was tough.
I just want to mention too, like, and perhaps this was said, but I didn't hear, one of the things too is we brought in a group of parents too.
Yes.
So, I mean, we brought, we did surveys, last year we did all kinds of surveys, like this, this has really been more than a six-month project. This has been like really a year and a half moving forward to get to this point, to get to this point tonight.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we did a lot of surveys to our community, but then we also brought in focus groups.
Yes.
And so I just wanted to make sure that that's clear. It wasn't just focus groups of our staff and administrators, you know, but we reached out.
The parents are instrumental.
They were.
Because some of the things that you'll see on the website were driven by their requests. So, maybe I'll probably just go out there and I just want to point out just a few things. I don't want to take a long time, because obviously people can...
Should we do the drumroll?
We have, we're gonna have a couple of questions too, so...
Okay. And it's a work in progress, you know. Okay, so just starting at the very, very top black bar there where you see Select a School, next to that, that used to say Languages, and we work closely with our ELL department and really should say Translate. And Alita, if you could click on that, we added Languages, but not only did we add Languages, but we added them in their native language in parentheses, and that makes it a lot easier for them. And I, don't do it now, but if you go to that, you know, obviously everything's translated into that language. The other thing we added to the right of that is Translation Assistance, because it was buried at the bottom of the footer of our old website, so now it goes right to Translation Assistance, and that's a universal symbol that Alita has the handover for translation. And Alita, could you scroll down as well, because what we added was a document container that now has important documents for the district and will be continuing to update this. I'm working closely with Kristen Lambert, our ELL coordinator on that, and making sure that all those forms are, again, not even in English, but they need to be in their language, so just trying to increase the accessibility for our English...
Terrific.
...language learners, so. And then if you go back to the main page, so then the other thing is that you'll see is that the logos in all the schools are now placed prominently on a white background, which is really nice, because it really helps it stand out quite a bit. And then, Alita, if you could just scroll down, I just want to go over the body of the page. So the body of the front page is consistent across the district now. Every single site looks just like this. The only thing that this site has is the district reports that are to the left of upcoming events. But our parents wanted calendar, easily accessible, so calendars right in the header, upcoming events are there, and then our quick links a lot, were really driven by parent feedback as well. What do they need to access quickly?
Yes, thank you.
Um, and if you scroll up, Alita, if you go to, scroll down to the header, yeah, just go to Departments, just click right on Departments. There we go. So what's different about this, it's, it looks the same almost as the old site, except that the breadcrumbs, and if you don't know what breadcrumbs are, they're just a trail of where you've been. So now, Alita, if you could just click on Teaching and Learning down on the left-hand side of that navigation under Departments, and you look at the breadcrumbs in the black line with the white letters, go ahead and click on that. So your breadcrumbs are always telling you where you are, and so Alita could go back up to Departments by simply clicking on that word. The breadcrumbs that we had in the other one were on white and it was really light and I don't think anyone ever used them. This makes it easier to navigate a webpage when you have that, so I just wanted to point that out. Don't think there's too much more, we're just gonna continue to have fresh new images on the site. We want to provide, you know, nice new window into the classroom if we can. We're doing good with our tweets, all the principals have their Twitter accounts and they're all embedded in there now, and I think it's great. I mean, I love going on there and seeing what's happening with every single school. They're doing really well. Yeah. And I think that's probably it, but I know you have questions, so I'll stop talking.
No, I just have one more thing too. The other piece too, that feedback from parents particularly, was a mobile user-friendly website. And I think when you go on your phone, you're gonna see that it's very, very mobile device friendly. There's nothing cut off, it's very easy to navigate, the pictures are just as clear and crisp, as well as the information in terms of finding it on your mobile device. as well as the information in terms of finding it on your mobile device, as well as our compliance with, which, in terms of visibility, accessibility, are obviously compliant.
Yep. Also, the calendar on the district site, our end users can add the school calendars to that calendar. If you were to click on the calendar, you're able to add other calendars. You're able to subscribe to all of our calendars, so that if I'm a center school parent, I can subscribe to it. And every time the secretary adds something to the calendar, I get an email notifying myself of that. So that helped increase. And I think that's important to parents, to be able, because everyone wants to get the information differently. So we're trying to find different ways to do that.
And I think if you, also clicking on like, that, one of these calendars, if you were to click on those, it'll give you even more information about that meeting. It'll tell you exactly the date and time of tonight's meeting, you know, where it's located, that it occurs every two weeks. And then, you know, there's a description, et cetera. So there's even more information, just again, to provide as much detailed information as we can regarding meetings, happenings, what's going on all over the district.
Right.
Just quickly, how many pages did we lose in this?
Oh, over a thousand.
I think it was 1,300, right?
Yeah. I stopped counting. I use another software called Siteimprove. I think someone, maybe, here. That is a company that helps us keep our websites accessible, but we need more PD on that, and I'll be working on that. But it scrolls through, and that company called me and they said, "Do you realize you just went down a thousand pages?" I was like, "Really?" Because I wasn't counting them, but that was, that was nice. So I guess it went up to 1,300 eventually.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
So, one of the things that I hear a lot is, "How do I reach my teachers?" And so when I go to the staff directory, I like what we have, that the teacher's name is there, the subject's there, their telephone number, their extension, their website access, their room number, their office hours, and the grades they teach. Is there a reason why we don't provide email addresses? And I think this came up once before.
There is a reason, and I can talk to Succi again about that. But the reason was, is because when you have, when you put your email address out there, the scammers will really pick that up off of webpages. So we tried not to do that. So, but if you put your finger, the scroll bar over the envelope, the email address shows up at the very bottom of the page. But I don't expect, you know, the layperson to know that. So let me talk to Succi again, to see if that's still an issue.
Can he do the pop-up?
But it's really to protect them from scamming.
So like, if I scroll over that, I just see the name. I do not see the...
Yeah, if you look at the bottom of the page, does it say mail to?
No.
If you're over the...
It's a, no, it's code. It looks like code.
No, it breaks here.
Oh, on the front. I'm in her, okay, let me try to...
Yeah, I'm looking at Hale and the teachers, and there is under, yeah, there's an email address there.
And that's if the teacher put that in. One of the things that we are gonna change is every teacher was able to log in and do their own profile.
Those are the high school ones.
Going forward, we're changing that, because we want less hands on our website. So the secretaries, when someone gets hired, will be going in and doing their profiles. So we'll have more consistency moving forward with that as well.
So this is interesting, because what grade, what school are you in?
Hale.
Hale has them, but the high school doesn't. I don't know, just like, have a point of view and consistency.
Yep. So staff directories is definitely a work in progress, because there's so many to do.
I know, I know. But it is one of the, one of the things that, I don't know if you guys are hearing it or not, but folks, you with us? But not having email addresses has been a bone of contention. If there's a reason not to, I'm not suggesting to do it. I mean, I think people would appreciate it. But if there's a legit reason not to do it, then I get that. Just share it with us, but if not, it'd be really next thing.
Definitely, I'll get back to you on that.
You guys can let us know.
Other questions?
The search functionality?
Yeah, it needs work. And again, PD around that, because there are some parameters that we can set. So I want to work with the company, because I think it's slow.
Yeah, it's very slow. It feels like there's some sort of constraint on the technology side that's blocking it from moving. But I know a lot of people, you know, they might make one or two clicks, and then it's like, "I'm just going to the search bar."
Yeah.
And then when the search bar doesn't work, you get frustrated.
Yeah, and one of the things that that software, Siteimprove, does is not only does it tell me how many people have used that, but I see the words that they've searched for. So I think that information will help us inform how to make the searches better. So it'll take a little time, but we will make that.
Okay, so you think you can make progress on it?
I do.
Oh, okay, that's good.
Yeah, it bothers me too.
I was expecting you to say that, it's just the way it is.
I think, I think what's important to me through this whole process is that we're here, that we're able to unveil this. And you know, Todd and I had this conversation earlier this morning saying, "Listen, we know that there's still work that's gonna be done. But the fact that we got here, I'm so thrilled. I really am." I think hats off to everybody who had a hand in pulling all of this together, our secretaries, everybody that had some. Yeah, and your leadership too, as well as Todd's, I just think are really, really important.
Who ultimately owns the websites? The website, the district site? Who's the, who's on paper, who's responsible for the maintenance and everything?
Well, that's part of the protocol that we've, we've had to go back and do a revisit on. And that's exactly why she made the comment a few minutes ago about not having so many people having access to being able to do things to it. And so we've streamlined that substantially.
Okay, all right, okay.
So that we can monitor it better.
All right.
And I just want to say thank you for, you know, with Todd in place and Brooke, allocating resources to allow this to happen was huge. Because it's just so much time. And I really appreciate that you gave the time and allocated resources for it. Appreciate that.
Mike has a question.
Yeah, so it looks great. And it's way, way easier to navigate, when you said that this is a work in progress, other than updating things as we move forward throughout the calendar year and the district year. Are there pieces that are left to add that will become part of the permanent website? Or are these just, or are you saying that work to be done, meaning just updates to existing?
Internally, work needs to be done. For instance, the searching.
We know that.
The staff directories, those little things. As far as something new and permanent, because it's technology and because social media and the trends are just, you know, moving so fast, I can't say for sure. But I would anticipate that we would be finding better ways to communicate with the end users. And because we're supposed to be meeting the needs of them, and all of their needs are diversified. So I think that that's where our websites are going. We just, we're not there yet, but we're moving towards it.
So work to be done just means refining what already exists?
Right. You know, and I don't know if it's gonna come around the corner. Maybe Twitter's gonna go away and it's gonna be something else. I don't know.
Most likely.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Oh, Lynn?
The staff directory at the bottom, the green. Yeah, when you go to the first page.
Yep.
So you've got the home, calendar, staff directory, and district at the top.
Yes.
And everything's accessible. And then you go down, and you've got those green buttons again, on the right?
The quick links.
The quick links?
Yes.
And you go to staff directories, and it wants information. You can't get it anything. So do you want people to be part of the school to get to the staff directory? Or do you want to just make the staff directory accessible?
I'm sorry, I'm not following.
So when you go to the green button on the right?
So, oh, you mean the one that says staff?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's not a staff directory. So the staff directory is always on the top. Staff is an internal resource website for staff. And that's just there just for them.
Gotcha. It's resources that they need.
Yeah, it's curriculum resources, it's stuff about PD, it's, yeah.
Okay.
Like, it's an internal communication of teaching and learning really with the staff.
Well, somebody...
Is it off-putting?
Well, to me, only because that sticks out more than the top staff directory, and I'd be hitting that.
Yeah.
So we could change the title for staff, or, you know?
Yeah, it used to say for staff, and then we were asked to make it just staff.
Yeah.
Staff portal.
Great, thanks Cindy, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Cindy. Great job.
All right, moving on. The superintendent's contract, so we, I know that for those of you that tuned in at the beginning of the meeting, we approved for, we approved and approved for release executive session minutes of December 19th, 2018, which was an executive session that the school committee entered to discuss successor contract with Superintendent Clenchey. And we do have a successor contract. We are going to have to vote on the stipulations of it in open session, but I'm gonna turn it over to Kathy Codyan to share with you the details of that.
Okay, so the, the contract essentially, for the most part, is the same as the previous contract. The big addition or the big change is that we are adding a $2,000 annual annuity. And for the upcoming contract for the 2019, 2020 school year, have approved a salary increase of 2% over this year's salary. And as I said, all other aspects of the contract will remain the same.
And it's a three-year contract?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, and a three-year contract.
Yep. Okay, so we need to vote on this in open session. So the vote would be to award, thank you very much for your efforts. And thank you very much for accepting a successor contract with Superintendent Brooke Clenchey for the term of three years. The, and the stipulation is the same contract as the one that's currently in play, with the addition of a $2,000 annuity. And for year one of the new three-year contract, a 2% increase. Does anybody want to move that down? Thank you, Kathy. Do you have a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you very much.
And thank you. Congratulations. That's exciting for me too. And I just want to say thank you so much. I love this district, and I think anybody who's worked, who works with me knows how much I love this district. And I said, just a quick comment. I said to some of the high school staffs, we were talking about the importance of that layer below you as a leader to help keep you strengthened and buoyant. And I have that. I mean, you look, you look to the back of the room right now, you know, Joan and Anne Marie and Pat and Rob, and I mean, I work with tremendous people. I mean, Todd's my BFF, as is Alita, my professional BFF, and they keep me strong. I had to laugh as Todd was walking through the office the other day, I think it was just yesterday or the day before, and I turned to Alita and said, "Wait a minute, okay, I'm running late." She said, "I know, I've already called," because I was heading over to the high school. She'd already called. I didn't even get the sentence out of my mouth. She's already, I already did it. And I said, "Well, listen, I've got that letter ready to go for residency." She said, "I've already called them, I've already taken care..." That's what you need, is people that almost think ahead of you. And I am so blessed in this district, and I am so proud of the work. I'm so proud of what you see tonight. I mean, that's, that's years of work that you're starting to see come together. And it's so exciting for me, and I just feel so blessed. And I thank the school committee for your confidence and your support, your encouragement, and just always...
And your constant questions.
Well, I'm okay with the questions. The questions make us stronger. I never have a problem with the questions. So I thank you so much tonight. This is really exciting for me, so thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate everything you're doing for us in three years. Okay, so we're moving on dovetailing nicely into the superintendent's mid-year review.
Yeah, and I'm just gonna do a quick review of some of our, the key salient points. I've already spoken with Kathy Codyan on the same topic, because of course, personnel subcommittee plays a role in this. So I just want to go through a couple of things, and I'll try to be really quick here tonight.
That's okay.
The creation of the communication plan, as you'll recall, was a key piece. And as you know, that's already done. It's implemented right now, and it's ongoing. And again, you see tonight, there's a great evidence of the work that's being done behind the scenes right now. The community safety sessions that have been held in each of our communities. The initial parent university that Todd spearheaded earlier with regards to the Chromebooks and technology safety. We've got a follow-up on that that'll be coming in the next couple of months. The community evenings on vaping, I'm very proud of that. The work has continued throughout the fall regarding the website cleanup. And here, we sit tonight, and I'm thrilled with that. The staff safety training that we said we were going to do, as was one of my, I think that was goal number two. That safety training has happened. It continues, it's ongoing. We've branched out more than we thought we would. We've done some additional training at the high school. Very proud that we're there. We've got work that continues on in that area. The Emergency Response Task Force now, their goal really is to finalize our reunification plans. And although we've got a skeletal, a skeletal piece of that work done, we haven't got the details, so Lisa continues to work with them on that. We can, we continue to communicate regularly with our local safety partners. And we've got great safety partners in all of our communities, and that continues to be ongoing. The ongoing work of our individual safety councils, those are active members that work in each of our schools. So they have purpose, they have beautiful dovetailing into the emergency task force, which is really the district-wide. So all of that work is continuing to be pretty symbiotic. The digital literacy plan that we've worked on, that has rolled out, you know, and I will say, I felt, I felt that was short-changed. I know that you did it in December, because we kind of rushed through that night, because we had such a full plate. But I'm so proud of the amount of work that Todd has done, again, working with Cindy and working with her team to get there. And so feel very good about that. Todd also took on the role of rolling out the Chromebooks earlier this year. That was smooth, that was incredibly smooth. And I know that was one of the things even some of the high school department shared sent to me is, wow, that went smoothly in September. So hats off to everybody for that late August, early September. The PD also continues. Remember, for example, that we had the technology tasting at Luther Burbank? That I didn't realize, but they had that as part one. They've since had part two on that. And they are looking to replicate that throughout our school. So that's exciting work to see coming together. The other experiment that we did this year was, we've brought in two teachers, Gary Kozlowski and Greg Newton. To, they're here for two days in our six-day cycle, and they work here at our central office. The whole point is that they are passionate about the work that they're doing. They are generating all kinds of different things. They are going in to help coach our middle school teachers. And so just to bring that digital literacy to a new level right now. They're loving it. And when I talked to them, you know, when I said, "I've got this, this idea," and I remember sitting down with Kevin and talking it through from a union perspective, "Could I do this?" And here we sit, and I said, initially, I said, "Well, let's take a look and try it for one year." When they were here the other day, they said, "Maybe we can do this for two years." So they're really excited about the work that we're, that they are doing. And I see the work now starting to funnel right up the schools. Very exciting. Other areas, we continue to grow as a district to have the focus on all of these areas, but others as well. I am excited about the amount of lead-up that we've done for the George Curros visit. You've probably heard almost every school committee meeting, something else that, you know, we're looking at empowering students here or there, or the work that's being done. Mary Marotta's doing a great book study with it. If you follow her on Twitter at all, you'll see the questions. Or Greg Newton is also involved in that. And so the work that's being done around the George Curros visit is just exemplary. It really is. We also continue to, I don't ever want to lose sight of some of the older goals. is. We also continue to, I don't ever want to lose sight of some of the older goals. For example, the forensic audit, I know that's old news. The truth is, we're still working on it. And I don't want to lose sight of the fact that that's still work that we continue to do. Budget efforts are ongoing. We are always looking for efficiencies. We're always looking at different ways that, and better ways that we can do things. So that continues to be ongoing for us, especially in the areas of facilities, wellness, food services. Those are all areas that we've always got a close look on. And finally, it's just really the regular day-to-day activities of a superintendent that, that take up time and take up your, your energies you're working through. It has been wonderful to have Todd come and join me this year. I know he said many times, I don't know how he did this, but, you know.
Yeah.
So to see, but, but you can see the difference. Like, I can see the difference, because the work that I was able to just maybe do, maybe an hour a week, he's able to take it and lump it all together and get it done. And so it's, it's just fabulous. So, you know, again, I just want to thank my team, because they helped get the, the goals accomplished for the district. And that's it. Any questions?
That's a great update. And clearly, you've made the district yours. I mean, it's got your stamp all over it. So-
I'm proud of the work.
You should be. We're encouraged to see more. Thank you for that. Any other questions for the superintendent? The, the Chauva Regional High School Sustainability Summit Field Trip. And we've got two, so, oh, well, you're gonna be up here for a while.
I am.
All right, well, settle in.
So the first one, I believe, is going to be then the Sustainability Field Trip, and I think you're gonna tackle that first before you go on to anything else.
Yeah, you've got, you've got all the paperwork there. This is another field trip put together by Nathan Pritchard, our German teacher. It's a really exciting workshop at Loyola University in Chicago, and it is underwritten by the Goethe Institute of Language and Culture. So for the students who are going, the whole trip is funded. I think the only thing they have to pay for is the ride to Logan, and then the ride from O'Hare to Loyola. The van, the flights, the room and board, the, the institute is all, the costs are, are all underwritten by the institute. Nathan is anticipating, there's about eight kids who will be going. They'll be missing only a half-day of school in May 24th, it's the Memorial Day weekend, so they're only missing, missing a portion of that day. So it is a great opportunity. They'll be back before school is, is in session again. It's, I think one of the things that Nathan does that's, that's really interesting, is he shows how German culture intersects with, with our culture, and also shows how it is, culture's constantly evolving. It's not a static thing that, that they're studying in class. So there's gonna be German academics and scientists at this conference, the focus of which will be how German engineering and German culture has incorporated the ideas of sustainability.
Any questions? Paperwork looks great. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank Todd, Alita, and Nathan. I've been kidding, Nathan. I said, you're the canary in the coal mine.
I know.
Nice trips. You're the ones that-
I've talked to Nathan more than I've talked to this boy.
So you need a vote from us?
Yeah.
So would someone like to make a motion to accept the Chauva Regional School District approval for overnight field trip travel on May 24th to May 26, 2019, for eight students and two chaperones to attend the Sustainability Summit at Chicago Loyola University?
So moved.
In a second?
Thank you.
You're a good woman. Thank you. All those in favor? Unanimous? Very much?
Since all this is donated, is there a thing that goes with it?
I don't know that it's donated, or if this university just doesn't charge a fee to high school students.
Correct. The Goeth Institute is, number one, fabulous. They do a fantastic job around interviewing. You can see through this, the languages and culture and immersion and science and history, et cetera. And I met with Nate about this, and they are, they are funding the trip. It's not a donation. They are paying, yeah, they are paying the way for these students to go.
Is this a continuation of the one that they went to Rhode Island?
Well, we, we got, we got through that. This is the same teacher.
Same teacher, different program.
Different, yeah, it's completely different.
Yeah.
Good question. It's a good question, yeah.
We don't want to go back there.
No, I mean, I, I, I mean, is this, are these the same students?
Same teacher.
But are they the same students, or are these other students?
There will be some overlapping students, in terms of his German students, but like-
Just wondering.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. You, would, would you like to do the next overnight travel, or would you rather do?
Sure. This was a revisit of the Disney trip.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think there's too much to say about it. I presented it at the last meeting. I know there were some questions around some fingerprints and a couple of other items. I believe those have all been taken care of.
Yeah. It's good to go now.
All right, folks. Have you read it?
Yeah.
Do you have questions?
I have a quick question. So on the, on the previous approval, forty times the eight kid was 320. Here, the eighteen, twenty-three per kid is less than the total cost by about 12,000. Does that mean we're anticipating about 12,000 from fundraising to cover that difference?
I don't have any work in front of me here. So can you just take a look at it?
It's the cost plus fundraising.
Yes, and they have done multiple fundraising events, from the mattress sale and-
Yeah.
Other things to throw back down.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions? So I need someone to move.
I hope that we approve the trip and the chorus to Disney Road.
And the dates?
Whatever those dates are.
Okay.
February 19th through February 24th.
To include sixty students and-
To include sixty students and six chaperones.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? It's unanimous?
Yes.
Nice job.
You have to understand, I was part of the Pittsburgh High School band that went to the Disney Parade in 1962.
Oh, wow. All right. And now we're moving on-
I would never say no to this.
And now, we're moving on to the Program of Studies review.
So I think, from our perspective, you know, Paul, you presented everything last time, and you also presented some potential changes. Are there any additional changes that you're looking at bringing tonight, or no? What, what we saw last time is basically what it is.
Yeah, some, again, some word changes. I'm, I'm gonna be working with changing the cover design a little bit, just reformatting some of the text. Try to shorten it, if at all possible. But no substantive changes, such as the ones we detailed last time.
So I guess, at this point in time, it's more a case now, school committee members are, do you have any questions on any of it?
Yeah, yeah. I guess I'm confused. I'm looking at the handout.
Yep.
I'm comparing graduation requirements on page six. I'm looking at information on page 14. I looked at, if this is the same stuff that was on it, um, social studies, social studies, English is four, math is three, science is three, social studies is three. On page 14, under subject and requirement, English is four, math is four, science is three, social studies is two, et cetera. Is there-
Yeah, the, what you see on page 13 and 14 are the requirements for the Massachusetts State Universities.
Right, so it's different.
Oh, that's what happens with graduation.
Oh, I see, I see the heading. I'm sorry, my mistake. Okay, so, so this is what the state of Massachusetts is saying?
That's what they're requiring.
Oh, so they're requiring. Okay, so I guess my question is, and perhaps I have a bias as a former social studies, oh, no, so we require three years of social studies. The state only has two. Okay, I'm gonna get my brain working shortly.
You're fine. We're ahead of schedule.
I don't want to hold up things. A little competitive, huh?
Not at all, not at all.
So, so we require three years of math, but the state says four.
No, no, it's not the state, it's the State University.
State University. Yeah, I know what I mean.
That's, okay.
So, but I know that-
We do now, too.
There is what, what the, the graduation requirements are, but that kids normally exceed those? Do you know what the percentages of kids that take four years of math, or even double up on math?
Two different things, but let's just look at the, I think-
It's more math.
More math. Our guidance counselors, our math department are always encouraging kids to take the fourth year. It's more of a, an exception to the rule if a kid doesn't take that fourth year of math. And usually, there's a story behind that.
Sure.
But we want to make sure that every student can gain access to a State University.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for that.
Let's talk about the technology requirement. She's gonna kill me.
Nope.
She is. I am so confused. I've heard so many like, wah-wah-wahs about it, and frankly, I'm not getting it. We have a technology requirement, but it was kind of outdated. What is the, don't ask me to re-ask this. What, what is the tech, what is allowable in that? And why do we have, and this is philosophical, a technology requirement today in 2019, when we should have, wait for it, something along the lines of, I don't know, some social-emotional supports, some financial literacy supports, some additional language supports. Do you have a perspective on that?
Well, I have multiple. One is that the graduation requirements are policy set by this group, not a policy set by school group. So personally, I don't think the things you just discussed are not, they're not mutually exclusive. You know, we would hope that, I think one of our goals, as we talk about social-emotional learning, is to weave it into all classes in some way, shape, or form. It's gonna look different for different classes. That's the approach. It's, it's as much about the teaching approach as it is about the curriculum.
The social-emotional piece, definitely. You know, if you take a look at the wellness, for example, in talking with Pete Connery the other day, you know, you take a look at how the social-emotional work is interwoven into the wellness. It's just, it's amazing.
So, so, yeah, I know. And then, and this is probably way oversimplification, but you know, when the last time we met, the, the event that went on at the high school with the kids, that a hundred kids could participate-
Challenge.
The challenge, like, like formalizing something like that, that kind of empathetic approach for, for high school students, especially given the stressors that they're under. I mean, to me, I would love to see, and maybe that's a discussion point, so thank you for that, too, by the way, to the school committee, is, you know, do we, do we at some point want to talk about what we think, with recommendation from the people that are the ones that are knowledgeable about it, do we think that there is something more that we could create as a standard? And I understand that it's built into the curriculum, and I understand that there are some constructs around that, but I think that if, what we heard from those kids was that it was so well-received, and I didn't know that, I didn't, wouldn't have even looked at that kid in the hallway, or, you know, I kind of made some new friends. And it's just that empathy that is not gonna be less needed, it's gonna be more needed as this world moves forward. And that is not a political statement. Do we want to look at something like that and drop a technology requirement? Because frankly, again, everybody's got a Chromebook in our school district at the high school, certainly, and then now down into the lower grades. It seems like a waste to me. They could teach us more than we can teach them, most of the kids that are on it. Do we want to look at that? And I know this is kind of, kind of throw a cog in the wheel on you, because, you know, we're in the midst of this, but what do you folks think about that? Steve?
Well, I was very impressed by the presentation that they gave. And I would think that everyone passing through the sophomore class should pass through that kind of a program. It's not the freshman class, because I think you're bringing, you're bringing together, you're bringing together a new diversity of kids from Lancaster, from Stowe, from Bolton. And they're gonna tend to migrate to their own, the kids that they know. And I think that kind of a program, even if you do a hundred and it's once, once a term or something like that, by the end of the year, everyone will have gone through that particular piece of training. And I think it's very important.
What do you think, Susan? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but your teacher and-
I don't know about the graduate, making it a graduation requirement. I mean, I think it's great to build it in.
Yeah.
To look at the programs available on an annual basis, but to make it a graduation requirement seems-
That's a really good point. So what do you think about, I'm gonna, I just feel like our curriculum in some respects, you guys are handling the educational component, but I feel like when we, from a real-world perspective, financial literacy is one of my big hot buttons. And I could tell you, I could sit here for an hour and I won't, and give you stats on this generation and how poised they are, and how they want it, and how they're more engaged than their parents may be even now with understanding their responsibility around, I mean, that to me, I mean, I don't know how y'all feel about that. So point well taken on the social-emotional construct. Do you think if there was a way to work it into the curriculum structurally as a freshman or whatever, but that financial literacy thing is really important.
I want to say something about that, too, because I participated in that program that they have at the high school that's run, I think, by the Rotary Club or something every spring. And that's, that's an extremely valuable learning lesson for any of them, because they just, they don't under, they don't have a concept of, well, how much does rent cost? How much, how much is taxes gonna take out of my earnings if they haven't already had a job? How much is car insurance? I gotta have that, you know, and, and all this kind of stuff. And, and, once again, that's kind of an offside thing. It's, it's kind of a side issue, not a side issue, but a side program that we offer to them.
But not a requirement.
It's not a requirement.
And that one, Susan, go for it.
Well, I, I just think it's sort of, I don't want to say slippery slope, because I think it's all valuable. I mean, I'm assuming that's one of the business electives would be something related to that. If you consider things like becoming an educated voter, and like, there's, there's so many different components of becoming, you know, a responsible adult. Where do you draw them?
I think that, but I think that's valid, too. So like, so I don't want to go down a dog leg, and we can, you know, we can push this down to policy and ask policy to do some, one second, to do some work on, oh, your policy. But I, I think, I really think that it's, like, we need to be poising these kids to go out and be really successful. And educationally, we are, and, and social supports, we are, but like, civic responsibility, I, I mean, that, what you just brought up is huge.
Those are all electives, though, within, underneath, no?
Yeah, but with the new social studies frameworks that are coming down, that are just been approved, and that, that is based on the feedback that they have been getting back from years, that our kiddos need a civics requirement. So they've now built those in to the social studies frameworks.
So that takes care of that.
In terms of the technology piece, though, I think that stems from his, like, way back.
It does.
Because we had a technology, just a technology requirement, which is now morphed into business technology applied arts, am I correct?
So all the same department.
Right. And I think that, that we're looking now, that every kid has a Chromebook in their hands now, but I think going years and years and years ago-
Well, that's right.
-schools when they didn't. But colleges were all on these learning management, management systems like Blackboard and these online courses, that we wanted, schools wanted to make sure that kids at least had some foundational knowledge for when they showed up at college and had to go into a one-to-one.
So we get that. So I'm gonna interrupt you, because we get that. But the question is, what the technology requirement was 20 years ago, what is the requirement now that will enable these kids to have tools and be kind of leapfrogged ahead? I'm gonna push the financial literacy thing again. I mean, we can create, I can push it to a subcommittee. I feel really strongly about it, just because I see it. I live in that field. And that, and it's not about me. It's about the fact that everyone is gonna be responsible to, hopefully, themselves. And finances is really important, and people- and finances is really important and people are afraid of that concept, but these kids are poised to want to learn it. Their generation is interested in getting the feedback, so I would like for us to think about that and to look at that. These kids are gonna come out of schools, if they go to college with debt, we all know that. Everybody's coming out with debt, it's just something to, I think that requirement is outdated. I'm not comfortable with the requirement, I'm not comfortable moving forward with it after all these years for the reasons that you said, it's outdated. And instead of just killing it, what would be a contemporary support for the kids? That's not part of their curriculum. Mike was first, and then Elaine.
I was first, but I'll, I'll, by all means, go, just for the record.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Mike.
No, I said, go ahead.
Sorry. A couple things.
Yeah.
I am reluctant for the school committee policy subcommittee to take this on. I would wanna see that, I would like to hand this back to curriculum. We have assistant superintendent, we have the folks at the high school, and to have them do the work and come back with a recommendation.
That makes sense.
The other thing, and I think more French.
Friend?
Friend.
Yep.
Oh, I know why, but I don't know, who did that? Because Judy French is a teacher at high school. She mentioned something about this reading workshop, and I hate to say this, but this is new to this district. Reading workshop has been around for many, many, many years, and I'm glad it's here, but it should've been here a long time ago. The word she used for me that encapsulates what learning is or what makes kids wanna learn and what really engages kids is the idea that it is an authentic experience, that everybody's not reading the same book, that you get to talk and work with ideas and they see the link between reading and writing. That's so important. And so I think in terms of adding or looking at what needs to benefit kids.
Evolve, yeah.
The more we integrate it in, the social and emotional learning should not be something you learn in wellness. It should be in every class, and it should be, and I think if you look at the standards for educators, stuff like that is embedded right in there. That's what we ought to focus on. Steve mentioned the challenge day for the sophomores. That's an authentic experience. I went to observe, these kids were like dumbfounded, you know, because, you know, you're gonna be a graphic designer, oh, I'm gonna make $30,000 a year, whoopee! Well, you know, then you can't have this, 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 this. I'm living in my parents' basement, what gives? So, the more we can create, the more educators can create authentic experiences and get kids to relate to them and reflect on them, that's what is going to make them engaged in learning. Now, to your point about financial literacy, where does that fit? Does it need to be a standalone course? Is it a way to integrate that into something? But I would want to have the curriculum folks take a look at it, work with the high school, and come back and have a conversation about it.
All right, so we're gonna hold that, I love, I love what you just said, thank you. Mike, go ahead.
I was gonna say something very similar, thinking about what Susan said. I, it's difficult for me to envision a, a social-emotional requirement, but, and I think a more effective and efficient and long-term way of doing that, and I can say that as a teacher, I value that almost more than anything else, that it does have to be embedded in the culture of students, the culture of teachers, and the culture of administrators. And it's just gotta be something that sort of sorrel's the district. And I, I think it would be difficult, but I'd love to explore ideas on how we would go about doing that, because I think that it has just tremendous, almost limitless value. And then sort of shifting gears, the other question that I would ask you, Paul, was, is that on our, the graduation requirements, it says that technology is a part of a business and applied arts requirement. So what are the technology options for kids that we're considering?
Well, if I were a student now, I'm gonna be selecting my courses starting in February, I could look at, there might be a design course, design course using various software programs. There might be video, there are video classes that a student could take as part of their tech. Even classics like woodshop, metals, those would fall under a applied technology course. So, the range of options are designed to appeal to a number of different students. It's not just what's available on a Chromebook per se.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I personally find a lot of value in that, and I also find a lot of value in what you're saying, and I don't know if they're mutually exclusive.
Right.
I like the idea of kicking it back to the instruction team, instructional team, and asking you guys to think of what are some of the more contemporary programs that school districts that are, other high-performing districts are implementing? Because I think that they're doing some cool stuff.
Yeah, I keep hearing the words embedded and authentic, and you know, and then what keeps coming to mind is interdisciplinary. And so, you know, we see technology or financial, we see that embedded in so many of our courses now and disciplines, no matter, no matter what it is. And I'm wondering if we start exploring through the lens of interdisciplinary or co-top models, because co-top models also speak to the social-emotional piece. When you're working, when kids are working with two teachers from multiple disciplines are creating, you know, a multi-discipline course, or a series of courses, or the idea of, and Massachusetts is way ahead here, and in terms of exploring the idea of pathways and allowing kids to pick a pathway that is almost like a minor, if you will, or a major, if you will, and by the end of their four years, they've got an expertise in technology or financially, if that's the path they go, but also have those requirements you speak of.
I think the other thing, the reality is, we couldn't pull this together for the next year. We would be looking forward to the year after this year.
Yeah, right.
But I think, you know, it's interesting, because I said to the staff, the staff members I've been speaking to at the high school the other day, I do really feel right now that our district is very stabilized, and I think we're in a prime position now to look at alternative things. So I think we're in a prime position at this point in time to explore this and go down the road with it and see. I also agree with everything that you're saying, a lot of the stuff now is completely embedded. I brought up wellness as an example, but the truth is, if you talk to your department chair of ELA, she'll tell you that it's already in there. So it's not just, to your point, it's not a one-and-done course, it's how we approach. And I think, you know, you'll hear us come out in a couple months talking about next year saying, you know, that's probably gonna be a key focus for us next year. But I love the idea of exploring, I know you and I have spoken about this as well, so off, you know, this venue, I would love to see us explore and see what else out there.
I think you're absolutely right too. I think things are kind of stabilized is a, is a good word. And it's like, like, we're finally where we wanted to be to say, where can we, what can we do?
Where can we go?
You know, it's like, we're finally there, you guys are so lucky, you know, you're here now, because it was a slogfest to get here. But honestly, it's time for us to like, do something cool and innovative, and don't be afraid to be the first one out of the gate. Elaine, go.
No, I was gonna say that I agree, I think it's time to rethink the requirements. And people threw out a lot of good ideas, from civics to financial literacy, to social-emotional stuff. And while I agree that it does kinda need to be embedded and it's part of the culture, I think that we also, it might be worth codifying some of the non-negotiables that we say every kid needs to learn this before they graduate, so that nobody slips through the cracks. Because if 100 sophomores are doing the challenge, that's great, what about the other ones? The reality fair is fantastic, if it's optional, not everyone's doing that. And I can easily see a path where kids are just slipping through and not really getting maybe even any of it. Another one I would throw out there is the digital citizenship. Yeah, kids know how to use the technology, and I know the digital literacy plan is really geared towards starting younger, but I think when they're in high school, they're in the thick of it, of how do I use the technology in appropriate ways and healthy ways, and how does that become interdisciplinary with my social-emotional health, and how do I use it to be a fully functioning adult and things like that? So, I think maybe if we send it back to a curriculum working group that we come up with a list of things that are like, these are non-negotiable.
So could we ask them, would, it lets us, let's, and I don't wanna put you in a box here, and I know that you guys have stuff on your plate that you've gotta deliver anyway, so it wouldn't be like next week, next, the next three meetings, but once our, do you think you could have, when do you think you could have some point of view, some initial thinking?
I'm just saying, I'm going through my mind thinking, okay, budget season is gonna take over.
No, 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 that's what I'm thinking, it's obviously not gonna, is it the end of the school year?
I would look more towards the end of the school year or even the beginning of the new year, to be honest with you, because you're gonna have to bring in a lot of stakeholders on this. You know, it's not something that's just mined out of TNL, I mean, it's...
Because department heads and chairs will wanna be, like, they've got so many, so many great ideas. Like, you just talked about digital citizenship at high school level, and I'm thinking media literacy at that, you know, like even narrowing that focus for our kiddos at the high school level, how important that is.
Does it make sense to do it at the beginning of the next school year and put it on the calendar? Or just do?
I wonder if there's summer opportunities too, for teachers who really wanna dig in over the summer, and there's some summer.
But to come back to us.
To come, yeah.
But to come back to you, I think in early September, I think is doable. The other thing I'd wanna say, kind of something that Elaine said that triggered it, and you said as well, one of the things that has come out of my meetings with our department chairs is the pride that they feel right now, and they said, we feel that we are starting to lead in our area. We have people that wanna come in and see the work that we are doing and feel so good. And I thought that was a great takeaway, and whether it's, I can't stress enough the work that the ELA team is, for example, doing at the high school right now with, was it Kate Roberts?
Novel Approach, Kate Roberts, yeah.
Kate Roberts, you know, that, that's just fabulous work. So, I really feel that we are poised to do, to do the look. I'm not sure where we would land, but to do the look, I think we're well poised to do that right now.
So maybe the beginning of the next school year, if you could come back and share with us your ideas on, you know, you talked with your, I almost said constituents, but you talked with folks that you need to talk to, you did your research and...
So we can put it on the calendar for coming back in September to...
I think it's also valuable, you talked about other schools, like what are other schools doing? Like, it gives us time, our teachers time, to maybe even go into other schools and like observe classes and see what they're doing and talk to other teachers? Because that just like breeds so many ideas.
This is the, this is the stuff that Neshoba needs to be known for, right? This is the forward-thinking, and, and we're not, you know, what we come up with may not be a brandy new, but we need to do it.
Well, I also think too that it has to be, and I've said this over and over again in the last month and a half when I've talked to folks, it needs to be a made in Neshoba brand. It needs to be what works for us, what our community values are, et cetera. To that point, for example, I'm gonna go back to Garrett Kozlowski and Greg Newton the other day. I think it was about a month ago, they came and said, on one of these days, can we travel to another school? Because they're doing some really neat things and we wanna see it, see it in play. And they did, they've gone off, done their road trip and come back, and they're all excited about, you know, that's what you want, is that excitement. So, I think, I think we're in a great position to do this right now.
Good, so then we'll hold you to it.
Yeah. I think it might be helpful to frame a charge, if you will, so we, there's like a statement that says what the goal is, so that we know what the target is, because we're, you know, talking about a lot of things. So are we only looking at, are we asking folks to only look at that, the business and technology?
No, 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 no.
But so that's why I'm saying, if...
I think what we're looking at is the, we're rethinking the technology requirement that's outdated and what could we replace it with?
But to frame it as something that we don't...
And to come back with suggestions and their recommendations at the beginning of the following school year.
We're really asking more than just the technology thing that you're saying is 20 years old. We're really asking, what we're really doing is we're asking the superintendent and her educational team to come back with some very cutting-edge thoughts of, in various areas, of social and emotional wellness.
But it's really up to them to make that recommendation.
Absolutely, that's their...
Okay.
...imprimatur, that's their job.
Okay, so you, let's go back to what you need, sorry for the dogleg, but really important, to drive this district forward. Are you looking for a vote from us?
Yes, because we wanna move forward with publication.
So, for this year, we'll approve horrible technology. So you are looking for, I need someone to move adopting the...
I just have a quick question.
What's that? Johnny, come lately.
I know, I just thought, this is quite confusing, we should probably know more about it. Is this in line with what's the policy right now?
Yeah.
It is, okay.
Okay, so we need somebody to move the 20...
Bring 1924.
2020 Neshoba Regional High School Program of Studies as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, and Elaine seconds, and any questions, comments? All those in favor? Janice, thank you, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Paul.
Run, little run. I don't know, I think it was pretty good.
It's tough.
Do y'all not care about what's going on? Elaine gets to say just about anything she wants to say at any point to anyone. Subcommittee reports, we have one on the personnel.
Thank you, we met last week. I wanna thank Brooke and her team for providing us with glossaries. They've been organized to represent things relative to business and finance, acronyms, and just some general educational things. The committee requested that we also have a glossary of terms related to the educator evaluation system, and Brooke provided us with a directory of the central office departments and an explanation. So we'll be reviewing, we gave some feedback, we'll be reviewing those revisions and working on the frequently asked questions. The other thing that we will be doing is aligning, looking through the manual and making sure that there are policies attached to the sections that require them. And also, we are working on an introduction that will address the need to review it every year and make sure that if policy changes, that the court, you know...
The policy supervises.
Yeah, yeah, but that we updated in the manual as well, so we're in good shape. And our next meeting is February 6th.
Nice, thank you.
Can I have one thing for emergency response, national advisory? It's not on here, but just to update, because I think Steve, you'd asked at the last meeting about the Emerson Youth Survey and the summary, it's now posted, just so that you're aware of that.
Under important updates.
Yeah.
On the new website.
Under important updates.
Perfect.
Right above your section, District Reports.
Those reports, we had so many requests, it was like it's on the homepage.
That's why they're there.
Steve, I'm sorry.
We can put it there, it's also under...
He's such a good man. All right, correspondence, there was one thing, but Elaine got, Mike and I got on Florida's high school, but it looks like that's being...
Yeah, that's, that's an issue that has been somewhat ongoing. We thought we had a fix for it, and they actually came in, and what they did was took a piece of the piping where they think the problem is out and replaced it, and we thought that that had been fixed. Then the smell came back again. So we've got another company coming in to look at, it will probably be a bigger fix again other than a $3,000 or $5,000 fix. So we've already reached out to our municipal leadership to let them know that it's on the docket. So that's going to be something larger than... larger than the school district alone would handle. So it's a little bit bigger.
Great. Okay, thank you for the update.
Sure.
That's really helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
And the consent agenda, meeting minutes of January 2, 2019, warrants of January 18, 2019, unless somebody's got an issue, those we're going to assume are approved. The executive session minutes of 12, 19, 18, we did at the top of the meeting, so we don't need to do that again. And for the agenda items for the next meeting, we get the employee insurance review, oh, I'm excited about that. I am very excited about that. Middle school trip to Washington DC approval, beginning of the year parental handouts review, discussion on full-day kindergarten and recommendation, MSBA SOI update, and the Worcester County Scholar.
Scholar, yes.
Okay, that's cool, too. All right, so...
Can I bring something up?
Yes, you may.
Okay, looking ahead, last April 11, we had a workshop, and Dorothy came in and did a presentation on, for the school committee, on writing the superintendent's evaluation, and I didn't know if we wanted to do that again this year, and if I should...
Yes, that's a great idea.
Now, last year what we did was, we did it at 5:00 before a school committee meeting, is that, so it would be on April 10, if I can get Dorothy, at, at 5:00.
Yeah, because by then the budget season's over, and I think, Steve, as long as you're okay with it on budget moron.
I don't see any problem.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, that's a great suggestion. Okay, then with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Kathy, and all those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. So...